Cavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmember Menke.
Here.
Councilmember Racelar.
Here.
Councilmember Wykembeck.
Here.
Councilmember Wyssapholzak.
In both of the absences, they did contact us and they said, as long as we got our floor, we're good to go. Excellent. A pledge, believe it. Pledge of allegiance.
I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's have a electric motion to adopt the agenda. So move.
Okay.
We have a motion, say to adopt the agenda. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or say no. It's adopted. Any public comments, as if there's anybody in the public who would like to make a comment, here's your opportunity. Please identify yourself for the record. Hearing done, we'll move on to scheduled appearances. Aylers, as you know, we were going through the rate case for water and so on and so forth. And it's, we're gonna have a presentation on this. And then about moving forward with it. We were able to bring in Aylers, they're actually here electronically and so on and so forth, so we have them. And I don't know if, if either Tracy or Matt, you want to do an introduction and then talk a little bit about what we're gonna, or we just go right into the report?
We can do an introduction. This is Lisa and Brian from Aylers. They're here to just present to you the study that they've done. They've done some extensive research on our water utility. And they're going to tell you what the results of that research has been. We've submitted a lot of information to them. And then they'll tell you the process to do the water rate increase and what needs to happen after this presentation.
A couple of things. Also, we haven't raised our rates in seven years. The, we also have the major project that we need to do, water project, and that's probably, that really got us, but then obviously there's ongoing expenses and so on and so forth. And as far as approaching, as we move forward with this. So we can go ahead. The floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Can you all hear us?
Yep.
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 All right, that sounds good. I'm gonna share my screen so that we can get the presentation up. But as mentioned, I'm Brian Raymer with Aylers. We also have Lisa Truputowski on as well. We're serving as the rate consultants here, conducting the water rates type. Are you able to see the presentation on screen?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. I'm gonna try to blow it up a little bit too, so you can hopefully see it a little better. I do know that this was provided to your packet of materials as well. But to kind of kick us off and understand why we're here, it sounded like there was a good introduction in terms of understanding the upcoming project that the city will be conducting for the utility. And a necessary increase in order to close on a safe drinking water fund loan through the Department of Natural Resources, you have to adjust rates. However, because the Public Service Commission governs those rates, there's only so many things you can do. So what we're tasked to do is identify fiscal sustainability. So being able to pay for existing obligations, but also those upcoming obligations, like the upcoming project. So our process, in order to do so, we typically look at historical rate performance in kind of a five-year look backwards. That's not to say should we have done things differently or anything like that, but it provides good context for our launching point to understand what all goes into the ratemaking at the PSC level, so that you feel educated as decision makers. And then as you get questions, either at staff level or from your constituents, that you feel you can answer those questions in a better, more accurate manner. We also provide future projections and actually kind of show a 10-year rate plan. However, understand, as we'll get into this, the future plan with the PSC is really kind of a one-shot in terms of doing a full rate case. Typically, they don't allow you to spread that out over time, but we'll get into that in more detail. The other thing I'll mention, kind of before we continue on, if anybody has any questions as we go along, please just interrupt us, loud noises, claps, yelling, whatever works. But make sure you get our attention, because if we have pertinent information up on screen, I think it can help to go through those items at that time. So don't hesitate to ask questions as we go. So as I mentioned, there are kind of certain opportunities you have to adjust rates with the Public Service Commission. Here, we're showing you the two levers you can pull to adjust rates. One is called the simplified rate case, which is the more simple way to adjust rates. It is typically tied to an inflationary adjustment along with the consumer price index that the PSC sets. So if CPI is, you know, 4% as it was last year, they, they now allow to 4.1% if you're eligible. So you can only do this once a year, and that eligibility criteria is twofold. One, you can only do so many of them, that you can only collect up to, you know, 40% of simplified rate cases stacked on top of each other until they would force you into conventional rate case. Or in terms of the financial test, if you're performing well enough, they're not gonna allow you to adjust rates higher. So if you're kind of beating their metrics, which we'll talk about shortly, they won't let you do the simplified. For the conventional rate case, you can do so at any time. It will be done on a point-in-time basis. So right now, we're really talking about all assets added in the near future through year-end 2025. And they'll generally want their math, which we're gonna go into. And then as someone mentioned before we started, the last time rates were adjusted was September 1st, 2018, about seven years ago, through a conventional rate case. So to describe what the PSC looks at, it's, and to answer the question, what should our rates be? There are two ways in the ratemaking world that are nationally accepted. You identify the costs of your system to identify that revenue requirement, or what should our rates be? So how you build that, two different ways. The top half of this chart explains the first way, which is what's called a cash basis. This generally aligns with, you know, how most people think about their personal budgets, really. You have your day-to-day expenses for the utility. This would be operating and maintenance expenses, and then any taxes they pay or payment in lieu of taxes, in this case, your debt service payments, and then cash-funded capital. Think of that as like the smaller equipment items you may buy year over year, or smaller projects that you may pay for with cash, like meters, generators, you know, any small, smaller equipment items on an annual basis, under the cash basis, you can include that in what you feel your rates should be. You then would subtract out other revenues, right? So as to not double dip, as there are other operating incomes within the utility. Generally, those are kind of forfeitures, any penalties that customers are paying, things like that, interest income in the cash basis methodology, subtract those out to build that revenue requirement. So again, that's what should our rates be? And then what we've done here historically is just kind of shown what have the rates been, so the actual user rate revenues. So slightly deficient, but in some years, and it looks larger in others, but understand under the cash basis, if you happen to spend a lot of cash in one calendar year, one fiscal year, it'll likely show rate inequality in a higher magnitude. So the PSC does not use this methodology. However, since their methodology, which I'll explain in a second, does not include debt, we do say it's imperative to understand, are you able to, under the PSC math, collect, you know, the cash basis math? The reason for that is, we obviously want to make our debt payments. So with that, looking at where we would be with the new prospective safe drinking water fund loan in tow in the future, we'd be looking at about a 60% adjustment under a cash basis. Now, for a utility basis, that's the other methodology, that is strictly what the Public Service Commission uses. So the bottom half of this chart, if anybody asks, how are rates built, is the answer here for the PSC. So they do look at the same first cost bucket, those day-to-day expenses or ONM and taxes, then the next two change. So instead of debt, they say you should recover depreciation. Depreciation is that annual expense to pay for the cost of an asset divided by its service life. You add that up for each asset, that gives you your annual depreciation expense. However, that doesn't consider inflation on replacing those assets, or any interest costs that you may have if you've taken out debt to install those assets. So the third cost bucket that the PSC uses and is generally accepted in the United States is what's called a rate of return on net investment rate base, which is kind of a lot of wordplay that we'll try to simplify here. But what it is, is you take the undepreciated value of your system, so total assets and service, subtract out the accumulated depreciation to get your undepreciated value of the system, and then the PSC assigns every utility in the state. Doesn't matter if you're Milwaukee, Madison, Durand, everyone is set to the same standard. And that's the benchmark rate of return that the PSC would like utilities when they come into a rate case to collect here on their undepreciated value. So you apply that percentage to that undepreciated value, and that gives you your third cost bucket. Add those three together, and then subtract out other revenues. One thing you may notice here is there is one less other revenue identified, and that interest income is no longer there. The PSC, since interest income can be quite of a volatile expense, will typically not allow utilities to count that as like a counter to your revenue requirement, or a subtraction to your revenue requirement. So they only include those first forfeitures, other revenues of the system, to subtract that out to build your revenue requirement. So here, looking at the same user rate revenues as we kind of showed above, you can see where you've been with the PSC math over time. The one thing I'll also mention, as you may notice, their rate of return does change with the bond market. What they typically say they do is they use a rate of return built off of 38, 30-year, excuse me, triple A yield plus 2%. So they set that annually as a standard. And then throughout the year, if there's fluctuations at the time that you're going through the rate case process, they will adjust that slightly. So if you happen to see bond rates go down during the rate case, that can be a benefit, unless you need the rates, right? You may just request that you get the original rate of return requested there. So that said, what the PSC is yielding, and all of the work that Lisa has done putting together the rate application, essentially what we're coming in for a request to the PSC at is 63.8% adjustment to your rate revenues. So that will kind of explain, can kind of shift between different customer classes, but understand, as we've gone through the needs of the system, we've basically identified that's almost exactly what we would come up with if there were no regulators here. We'd come up with a similar amount. Any questions on that before I continue? This is probably the most important slide.
Everyone good? Questions? Okay. Yep.
Hearing done. The other item that we want to point out is obviously rate performance is not the only indicator in terms of financial performance of the utility. One of the other highly valuable financial indicators to look at is your reserves position. The reason for that is, of course, utilities operate in kind of a volatile maintenance environment, meaning we can't predict main breaks, we can't predict when things go wrong. Therefore, it's imperative to have reserves in case we have disruptions in cash flow. That could also be true if you have disruptions in cash flow relative to your revenues. A large customer leaves, COVID happens, and people stop paying bills, whatever it may be, reserves are paramount in order to make sure you're healthy when those disruptions happen for utilities, they just tend to be more on the expense side. That said, we've looked at the utility relative to pure utilities, the size of the utility, kind of volatility of usage, et cetera. We didn't identify four months as an appropriate target of operating and maintenance expenses, including depreciation. And then we also add 100% of next year's debt payment into that target as well. So as you can kind of see, the utility was basically right where it should be in terms of our recommendation. And then in the past couple of years, has had to rely on reserves to kind of continue, excuse me, to operate. So then speaking to the future, now that we've reviewed kind of the past, we're looking at about 5.4 million of added capital between 2025 and 2033, due to the limited cash in CIP that we just showed on the previous slide. A lot, or most of it, may have to be funded by debt or other outside sources. So we did show this chart to just kind of say, if we're to be able to recommend adjustments here, the goal is to be able to fund all of your operations. So what we're looking at here is what net revenues we have available for every dollar of debt service. And that net revenues already counts in the fact of funding operations, because it's cash revenues against cash expenditures of the utility, what's left over, that's the purple line. And then how much of that is able to pay for debt service? So we always want to make sure that we have, we're not just at a one-to-one ratio there, because again, we have unknown events that happen in terms of expenditures, and we want to be able to make sure we can make our debt payments. So here, our goal in solving for all the adjustments through the 10-year period is the purple line is higher than the green line, or you're able to make all your debt service payments. The one thing that's a little unique relative to being a regulated utility is we don't get to choose the adjustments, right? We're beholden to the PSC. So when we are making adjustments in the 10-year plan, as kind of shown in the full tables that we provided, understand that our model is predictive in terms of what the adjustment would be relative to the PSC math. If you're eligible for a simplified, we're kind of pulling those levers based off of what our model is yielding. So here, ultimately, we have a couple of increases over time, and the main one we're gonna focus on is tonight's increase at the 60%. So what does a 60% mean for a customer? Right now, you pay a volume charge. That's, and we've based that off of an average customer. We're using 4,000 gallons per month. And your current volumetric rate is $3.35 for every 1,000 gallons used for the first 75,000 gallons. So nobody in the residential class is likely getting out of that first block in a month. So you can understand relatively, it's gonna be a flat volumetric charge, if you will, meaning if you're not getting out of that block, you're not gonna increase. So we're taking 4,000 times the current rate, which would be the $3.35. And then you currently also have a fixed charge of $12 per month. So you'd add that to your volumetric charge and get a total current monthly bill at 4,000 gallons of about $25.40. The 63% adjustment would change those rates. Understand that the time, point in time that we're at now, we're just gonna take it as a flat percentage change, and I'll kind of explain that that can change the PSC process in a second. But applying it on a flat basis, that yields about a $16 change per month. So it is not a percent-dollar ratio, you know, one-to-one ratio there, meaning it's a $63 change per month. That would be quite significant. Not to say $16 isn't significant, but the point being is the percent-dollar difference there. So 63, almost 64%, all other things being equal, would yield about a $16 change. Now, as I mentioned, the PSC does go through a process to allocate that 63% to the customer classes. So generally, you fall within a 95% to 102% of what this change is for each class. So residential class could be, you know, 97% of this, or just about 60%, or it could be slightly higher. The PSC is the one who runs a cost of service study analysis to say, you know, the demand that the residential class is putting on the system, because they use the system differently, they are the problem child, if you will, for peak demand, right? Everybody's taking showers in the morning, going off to school, going off to work, and then at night, coming home, bathing the kids, doing laundry, et cetera. We're causing the peak demand on the system. So sometimes, we're actually causing more costs to the system relative to peak demand versus an industrial customer who might just be flushing bathrooms for three shifts a day. So understand, this could move slightly up, slightly down in terms of a residential user. The other thing that I'll mention here is we have the whole component of the public fire protection charge as well, which we'll get to in a few slides. The other thing that we represent is we annualize this in the last couple of columns on the right. Where in $16, applied to 12 months would be about $195. And then applying that to median household income here right now, stated at about $54,000, represents about 1% of the median household income. We do understand that median household income does not mean a lot for the majority of the community, right? That's just the middle data point. So the last table and the full tables we provided does kind of show by income level how they would be affected in terms of percentage of income at those income levels. Of course, here, the concern would be, you know, maybe those who are on a fixed income, they may use less water, but certainly any adjustment of this magnitude, you know, could be hurtful to those customers. So we do want to be cognizant of that. Those will be ongoing conversations with the PSC. If there's desires at the decision-making level, council here to change how those rates are kind of divvied up, we can certainly have those discussions with the PSC and have more pointed discussions based off of the desire of the council. So that said, the other last thing I'll mention is, we show this median household income because there's been a few studies done through the AWWA more recently, and the University of Michigan, while acknowledging median household income is not the cleanest indicator of affordability, they have kind of set those standards to be about 2% to 4% per utility would be kind of a cautionary tale. So if we were to yield 2% here or higher, that would be something where we might be recommending a different rate structure right off the bat. Here, we're not at that point, but certainly if there's a discussion that you want to have, we can talk through some different rate structures. So then, speaking to the average residential user with PFP, as mentioned, there would be an additional charge. What we've represented here is a look at what the difference in the, adding that charge to it would be. Essentially, looking at adding the current rates, we're at $25.40. As mentioned on the last slide, just to refresh, about a $41.60, adding the public fire protection charge, $9.28 is right now what we're showing. Again, that'll be a number that the PSC determines, but that would actually be a difference of, total difference of about $25, where the water bill would be about $50, almost $51 per month. It should be mentioned, and we'll show this on a future slide, and then currently, it'll, while it looks like a new charge, because it's new to the water bill, everybody who's a taxpayer pays into this, because it's put on the levy, and we'll kind of get into more detail on that later. So then, in looking at kind of where you reside within a multi-county area, so here we have Pierce, Buffalo, Pepin County, looking at where you stand currently, almost about smack dab in the middle. And then, as a result of the full rate case taking effect, you would jump about five utilities here in terms of what the new rates would be, just at that flat 63.8% applied. This is sorted based off of the 12,000 gallon column here. The other thing that I would mention is be cognizant of, you know, your needs are different than the other community's needs. You may have topography that's different, therefore causing, you know, higher pumping needs. You may have different treatment expenses based off of what's in your source water. So it's not always an apples-to-apples comparison here. And the one point of fact would be to, it's a, it's a point-in-time adjustment, and those other utilities may just not be at that same point in time, but they may be a year from now, two years from now, three years from now, et cetera. And that's why we show the effective date here. You can see for some utilities, it's been quite a bit of time, you know, I see one here, they're adjusting rates when Packers last won the Super Bowl, right? So there's gonna be other utility bodies, it's, you know, their assets are gonna need replacing, et cetera, that they may be adjusting rates as well. But hopefully, this provides some context in terms of comparison, current versus projected.
Does your projection take into account inflation? Inflation goes on?
Is there a question there? I heard someone.
Yes. Does your projection take in, in the coming inflation?
How so, in terms of?
Talking about the total 63%?
Yeah.
Yeah, the total 63% that we have adjusted in inflation up to today. So this is a cost of what it's gonna, what today's costs are versus what we were, what we were at. It doesn't take into inflation five years down the road.
That's what I'm asking, yeah.
Correct. So the PSC, when they adjust your rates, it's point in time. So they really only allow you one, you have to do kind of the magnitude of the math, is the phrase I use at the time you go in for your rate case. And then they don't allow you to go beyond that, right? To kind of say, hey, we're gonna set our operating expenses for an amount five years from now and apply an additional 10% to all of our line items. They don't typically allow that. They only kind of allow more of a budgetary look relative to operating expenses, and then for the capital expenses, right? It may be estimated, because construction's not complete, but they'll only allow you for that year that you're kind of in, or the preceding year. So right now, we're kind of already in '25, but it's test year '25 that we're going for with the assets based off the time they'll be placed in the service. So the answer is simply more or less no.
I got, I have a question. So then that 10-year plan that you have, that's, that's essentially a guess, because the 2028 rate, we'd have to go and do this again, and it could be more or less.
Correct. Yeah, I can kind of bring up the more detailed item there. But what we're doing is we're adding your capital in, and we're identifying what future adjustments would be under the PSC math over and over and over again. So you can kind of see here, when we're adjusting rates in the future, we're kind of showing what does it get to, to a projected PSC benchmark. So we're kind of keeping their benchmark at about 6%, and that's what our rates are. You know, if we had an unregulated utility, as I kind of mentioned, we'd be able to keep that adjustment magnitude a little more flat, right? Or more linear, if you will, kind of matching here. So we may get to this similar cumulative adjustment, but we don't have that luxury with the PSC, because when we go in, they change it to whatever their math is at that time. Our model is just trying to predict what that will be under a set of assumptions. Does that help?
It does, because your model was close to the, on page four, right? Like you're within 3%. Like you're within three percent. So, okay. Yep, it does.
Yep. So then the the PFP item, let me just get this back into big screen. So um in speaking with uh staff, you know, from several of our advisors, you know, there's an understanding that, you know, there's levy limit issues and this is across the state. I'll get into how many communities are doing this in a second. But um right now, a lot of communities are facing where our expenditures are growing faster than we're allowed to increase our largest revenue source, which is, you know, the tax levy. We're only allowed to increase the levy by net new construction and inflation has been outpacing that new construction uh a lot these days. Um, so we're getting general fund expenditures higher than general fund revenues. Anytime we say GF, understand we're trying to shorthand this to general fund. So there is a solution uh to reduce general fund expenditures. So by moving the public fire protection charge that currently the water utility charges the general fund, so it's probably a line item in your budget called hydrant rental or something like that. Um, but by changing how that's charged just to the water bill, that that line item in your general fund budget can go to zero. So you can move everything to the water utility to more of an inline transaction. The issue is you have to do that as a part of a conventional rate case or within five years of your last rate case, you can make a special request to the PSC. Uh typically, uh in a lot of the communities uh that we're serving and going in for rate cases, you know, for projects and other things like the city was entering into, these are items we're bringing up to say, you know, this is your opportunity to help out uh the general fund as well if you want to do it. So I'll kind of go into how that looks on this slide. So as I mentioned right now, the public fire protection charge, what that is, is your water system is oversized in order to provide adequate flow that if me, Lisa, all of you are turning on our water, we have that water coming through the pipes. But then there's also water available to fight fires under a certain uh fire standard uh that the PSC has sets. Um, so again, your system is oversized um in order to, and there's also explicit assets for those uh for that operation uh like hydrants. So in order to uh pay for these costs, right now, what the utility is saying is, hey, I got an expense and if you want to pay for it, we're gonna charge the general fund and then under statute, although you may say, well, it's just one line item in a hundred line item budget. In theory, we could say dog licenses are paying for this. Well, actually, no, under statute, it does say you need to collect levy in order to pay for that if you're charging the municipality. So regardless, if you want to say, I could slice it this way and argue, we have other revenues paying for it. It actually is technically a part of your levy under statute. Um, but I understand that a total budget is balanced between revenues and expenditures. So you could argue it the other way, but under statute, it's paid through taxes. Again, this is only for the oversizing of your water system and the, and the explicit assets to fight fires. This is not firefighter salaries, this is not fire trucks. This has everything to do with the water utility and nothing to do with the fire department outside, the fire department benefits from the water that's available to fight fires, of course. Uh, but this is not paid for firefighter salaries or anything like that. It's just the oversizing of the system and those assets of the water system that help complete this operation uh to provide water to fight fires. So here is how it's working now, kind of a triangle or square transaction, however you want to identify that. And then you can, and move it to the water bill, where it's more of an inline transaction, right? You have those costs and then you're collecting revenues through the water bills in order to charge this. You eliminate that line item expenditure and there's no need to collect a levy to pay for anything in the water utility um there. So it removes it from the general fund. Now, certain covered services, if you were to do this, like storm, if you create a stormwater utility or other items like that, the levy limit law says you have to take a negative levy adjustment. This is excluded from that and it's actually pretty explicit in the law that uh the public fire protection charge moving to the water bill, there's no negative levy adjustment as part of this. So imagine your twenty-five budget, the only thing you're doing is taking that hydrant rental line in expenditures and moving it to zero, which provides capacity, of course, to catch up probably on the other things that you may be experiencing uh within trying to balance the general fund budget. And if you're asking how many communities do this, um, I believe that's in a couple slides, but I'll go back to the other slide. But this number is actually closer to seventy percent uh now have moved uh the PFP to the water bill because of the levy limit issues that all municipalities are facing and that new construction not keeping up with the cost of inflation in order to, you know, attract and retain uh good employees um and provide the essential services that we do um to our constituents. So we have a couple of frequently asked questions here, the FAQ. You know, the question is always, will my tax bill go down? Um, a couple of things to note there, right? Uh, the city does not control the county school or other portion of the tax bill. And then the assessment of just this action item, will it go down? In theory, yes, but right, there's a whole budgetary process. Um, so if you're filling that hole with other needs, uh that doesn't automatically mean that the tax bill goes down. But in theory, yes, no other changes, it could. Um, if you're only making that one adjustment, you know, you wouldn't need a hundred thirty-five thousand of levy, but certainly I'm sure there's other things we've kind of brushed off to the side or haven't had the opportunities to adjust our levy to meet that we could fill that hole with. And then the fire department expenses, I think I kind of covered that, but again, no. Um, who pays for the public fire protection charge is another uh important element to cover relative to making this change. Currently, any taxpayer pays for a public fire protection charge, right? So if you're letting a tax on a parcel that's in the city, they're paying for it. If you happen to have water customers currently that reside outside the city, uh there would be a suburban charge for that. I don't know if you guys have that or not, if there are any suburban charges um uh there. But I can just say, sorry, Lisa, were you gonna jump in there?
Uh, I already have it in that car, so if one that receives it.
Okay, so one per, one customer does get charged uh already on their bill as a suburban customer, right? Because they're not paying for it through the taxes. But now, when we make this change, all water customers pay it and then you can add language to say non-customers should pay it as well, right? Because they were already paying through their tax bill. And if you don't add that language for non-customers, now you're making the pie smaller as to who's paying it. So you'd actually punish just the water customers by not including it. So we've recommended that to all communities who are making this shift. I have yet to see one who has not included the non-customer language with the understanding that they don't want to shrink the pie and make the burden higher uh going through a rate change for other needs as well. And then the other uh element there in terms of language, we would uh add in is having an exception. You know, if you have two or more adjacent properties, um, you can just have one charge. The theory there is, let's say on one parcel, you have your house, but then you segregated the neighboring parcel uh for your Christmas tree farm or uh other, you know, items you might be doing iter culturally. Um, and you have an empty lot next to you that you happen to own. Um, you can still kind of cover that at charge with one charge instead of saying, nope, you get a flat charge for this lot and that lot. Generally, uh the situations that makes that uh kind of fair is, if you think about it on a tax basis, there's generally very little tax um on that vacant lot. So this is to kind of cover those elements. If you happen to be, you know, a real estate uh guru and have different houses all over the city, right? You would still be charged for multiple properties again. These are kind of the adjacent lot uh situations. Therefore, the only new PFP contributors would be your tax-exempt uh properties. So schools, churches, et cetera. Um, those would be the new, because right, they weren't paying taxes. They weren't actually paying for water to fight for fires. Uh, now they will be um there.
One, one second, Brian. So just to clarify what he means by non-customers, basically you think of it as vacant lots with no homes being built and no water meters on it. So they were paying taxes on that lot, which was going for the fire protection. Now they're gonna pay a fire protection charge. So every vacant lot in the city will get a nine-dollar-and-twenty-eight charge, dollar, uh nine-dollar-and-twenty-eight-cent charge as well. If you own three lots that are vacant, you're only gonna get one charge because they're contiguous. I think that looked like a few people might have, might have been confused on that.
Yeah, so when the water bill comes up after the rate increase, does that show us a separate line item then?
Yes, if you, you look at in your packet, like in my example, water bill.
Yeah, I think I got to it later on.
It'll say new public fire protection charge. It won't be incorporated, it'll be its own separate line item on the bill.
Boy, I'd sure like to have some kind of an educational thing with the newspaper or something about what's going on here.
Oh, yeah. We'll, we'll have multiple open houses and public hearings. This is basically step number one.
Yeah.
How many people in Durand have a tree farm?
That's an example.
Yeah, I'm saying, I'm just saying how, I mean, is it more, should we be charging, you know, every lot? I mean, how many people have vacant lots next to them and how many people have? How common is this in Durand?
So like, for example, let's use up by my house here, I'm familiar with where I live, right? On one side of me, I have, where there's one property where that owns four lots. So they're gonna get one nine-dollar-and-twenty-eight cent charge for those vacant, empty lots, right? Versus they'd be getting nine dollars and twenty-eight cents charges for every lot. While there's not a lot of fire protection need on that vacant, grassy lot. So one charge is equivalent. Now, if they built a house or a building and put water meters on each lot, then each lot would. Yeah, so if they put a house on each lot, put a water meter on each lot, then each lot would then get its own separate charge because you're putting a water meter in there. So every water meter gets that charge regardless of where it is. It's just empty vacant lots only get one charge.
That makes sense. Thank you.
This is sticker show. If the vacant lot is next to your house, is that still an extra charge?
No, because it's adjacent, it's adjacent, anything adjacent to what you own. So and that, and adjacent is across the street or across the creek or anything, as long as you're contiguous, continuously touching. Um, streets don't consider that, would consider that contiguous. So if I own the lot here and a lot across the street from me, it's still one charge.
Does vacant lot include people who might have cars parked on this, on these vacant lots? I mean, if there's like.
Think of it as a tax parcel, like a tax parcel is a tax parcel. It's not, we don't, we don't look at it like what's on it, we just look at the tax parcel. And if the tax parcel does not have a water meter on it, it's considered a vacant lot in the water utility. And the zoning is completely different, but in the water utility, it's just considered a uh noncustomer lot or vacant lot. So it goes off of the tax parcel. Does that help?
Yeah, yeah, I was just thinking, you know, if someone's perking like their camper boat and car on a vacant lot and there's a fire that breaks out.
No, it doesn't take none of that into consideration. It's impossible to kind of take that stuff into consideration.
And, and just to let everyone know, I always give my history part of this. Uh, this charge that has been, um, I don't know how many years we've, we've done it for, you know, this hundred and thirty-five that we've had on the tax rolls that has, has gone in there. There's been every few years, seems to be discussion about it. Um, and sitting there saying, why do we do it that way? Well, obviously, this is a different way of doing it. We're collecting it and then it frees up, and then it puts us in a situation, because we've already had the discussion concerning about borrowing money to do more, some more street work. This would free up general um fund money to do that and it would put us in a situation. So the question is either we're gonna charge them on there or we're gonna increase the taxes and, and, and if we want to do those other projects that we're talking about doing to try to keep our streets up uh as best they can. It's, so it's one way or the other to do it. I mean, we could go around and not do this, but then again, we're looking at raising the tax levy to, to, to do those projects. That's, that's what we're staring at here. You're actually, Rick Mark, it seems like a lot of money. Um, it is?
I'm not complaining, I'm just saying that unless we educate people, because from one month to the next, when they look at that, this charge was never on there before and now I'm going up sixty-three percent or whatever.
Yeah, one of the first things I did was I printed out a copy of mine, I paid automatically on my account. But I got one of mine out and I started doing some figuring here. And I said, okay, this is what it being per month and so on and so forth. When you, and when you look at it, again, now I'm sort of the thing, being a single um uh one-person household, I don't use a lot of water, you know, um, and stuff. So that, but, but again, I, that's the way I sort of looked at it. And when I broke it down, it was like, this is probably pretty reasonable.
They still got a lot of slides left, so we can get into the sticker shock. So we, we can, we can get these guys moving here. So we can get into the sticker shock in a little bit, and it, and it is. All right, Brian, go ahead.
Yeah, no, it's a good discussion though. So hopefully uh this next slide will help kind of contextualize what is the change um there in terms of how much was I paying uh through my taxes just for PFP versus how much will I be paying? So understand uh all of this in terms of the amount charged will also change in the context of the rate case. Um, that's to say the hundred thirty-five in terms of your cost, that was established in um your last rate case when that was completed. Um, and then it was updated with your simplified rate case. But beyond that, nobody's done a study to say what those charges actually are. The PSC will now update that. But that would be true regardless of if you're moving this or not. So we just keep it at the current cost so that we're not guessing as to where the PSC falls um when they do find a final dollar amount. So we're keeping it at the current amount to find the nine dollars and twenty-eight cents charge in terms of what the um total cost would be on a monthly basis. On an annual basis, that's a hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-nine cents. The majority of your customers reside there, right? Over eight hundred customers of this system, so like ninety percent or probably slightly higher there are gonna be about a hundred twelve bucks currently what they pay. And this is not an average assessment, but we also have the mill rate. So if you want to calculate that for yourself, a two-hundred-thousand-dollar assessed property actually pays two-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars annually. So it actually is a reduction in terms of what you're paying into that. Part of that is due to the customer makeup and charging it on a meter basis, just like your fixed charge, which we do recommend doing. Ninety-five percent of utilities charge it in this manner. The utilities that don't charge it in that manner, when they've gone in for a rate case, they ask to charge it in that manner. The reason being is because they're running through treasurers, uh because the way to charge it any other way is highly confusing and causes billing system problems. But that said, um, charging it on a meter size basis makes it easy to do because you already charged one fixed charge, uh the service charge on a meter size basis. But it would be a hundred and twelve bucks versus currently, you know, about two-hundred-and-eighty-two uh dollars annually. Now, that's gonna vary, right? If you have a higher value property, that difference is actually gonna be a greater benefit. If you have a lower valued property, you know, you could say, I'm not receiving as much benefit there. Uh, that said, um, understand by changing, this is actually generally the result we see. The other part is think about, we're adding to the pie with tax-exempt properties and the non-custom, well, not the non-customers, but those tax-exempt properties. So um, that's kind of the results. Um, as we look at what you pay annually now through the levy and paying for public fire versus converting it to the charge. So uh certainly a positive message there for most, um, or some, I should say.
Based on this slide too, you can see, or that slide, you can see how the rate changes by the size of the meter. So for example, um, I'll use a, this, a city building that has a four-inch water meter in it. That property was paying no taxes at all to now we'd be paying roughly about two-thousand dollars a year for fire protection, which is close to what, what that property would, would need. which is close to what, what that property would, would need in fire. I mean, it's going to need a lot more than that, but at least now they're paying something towards it versus nothing on the tax roll.
Yeah, I like that idea a lot.
So, uh, here kind of our final recommendations. I know we've gone through a lot, but, uh, one, you know, it's important to educate, um, so that you can pass on this message. And, um, we do recommend filing the full rate case for the test year at the recommend, at the, um, PSC's rate of return uh, right now, which is about six-point-one, six-point-two percent. But that, you know, yields about a sixty-three percent adjustment. That'll change, right? The PSC is going to do their review, have their changes and will be along the way for the ride with staff that can keep you informed of everything. As well as, once we file the rate case, there will be a docket number that anybody in the world can subscribe to. So, you know, your constituents yourselves can all subscribe to the docket to kept, be kept apprised of anything that's going on uh, within their rate case. But that said, our reasons to do so is again, it matched kind of the cash basis, right? If we didn't have the PSC here, we'd reside pretty much in the same position. Uh, we just reside slightly a few percentage points higher, um, due to the PSC math. You want to avoid further debt pressures, right? That declining, uh, reserves, we don't want that to go down even further. Uh, we do have the opportunity to close on a safe drinking water fund loan while we didn't get principal forgiveness. It is still a low-interest loan in an advantageous program that's on a draw feature. So a bunch of nice things we can't always get with other financial options that are out there. So in order to close on that loan, you have to prove to the state that you have revenues to pay for it. Um, so this is your mechanism to do so. Um, and it would continue to pay for existing and proposed obligations. And then finally, this is your only opportunity to actually convert that PFP. If you were to say, can we, you know, do that later? You would, you would have to wait, you know, until your next rate case or, uh, make a special request to the PSC within a five-year window. So again, it's your opportunity to do it. You can do it now. There is slight advantage just looking at an average assessed property, um, in doing so. The last thing that I'll say that's not mentioned here that is very important and it sounds like you're in a great headspace already thinking about this ahead, but I cannot encourage you enough to make sure that you communicate, um, with customers to let them know this is coming. Because the statutorily required customer notice, uh, from the PSC side does not come until they schedule your public hearing, which may not happen for four months. And they may be more mad, you know, a rate adjustment is going to make anybody mad, of course, paying more for anything. Uh, but they may be more mad when that customer notice has statutory language that says, you filed an application in January and the public hearings now, they're going to say, why didn't you tell me about this when you filed it? So, um, in our experience, we cannot encourage you enough to educate the public. We can provide some kind of simple language, um, to help you do so. I did so today in another community that they put on their website, um, when they're filing their application. Uh, but that said, uh, I know, I think it was you, Matt, who said it or someone there. I apologize if it wasn't. Um, but somebody said, you know, having a public information session, sharing materials that we shared here tonight. Again, I can't encourage that enough. It was very confusing to me when I started doing this, uh, ten years ago. Uh, but completely understand that it's going to be very confusing to somebody who hasn't touched it, right? Uh, ever. So, uh, it does take a couple of times to explain all the mechanics, uh, that are going on. And the sooner you do that, uh, the better. And if you just follow the statutory requirements, you may get additional backlash just due to the passage of time. Um, so again, we do thank you for your time. We would recommend, uh, that if you want to make a motion to file the rate case, you can do so. And, uh, we would then do that on behalf of the city and file that with the PSC, provide staff the information to subscribe to the docket. And then there, they can disseminate that, uh, as, as you kind of wish. So, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions? I think for most of us here, we've been sort of talking about this for a while. Uh, but this sort of brings it to the point where we're about moving forward with these. The, the two major parts, of course, what we have to do to meet our needs to run our water department and then also about changing the way that we approach the, um, uh, hydrant fee is, is best we call it for, for fire protection. And as I completely agree that we should go ahead and, once we file this, to make sure we get the information out. If people have questions about having a public meeting, if somebody wants to come in and ask questions and, and then so we explain this long before we actually get to the public hearing, which obviously is required through the PSC. And again, as I said, that could be how many months out depending on, we file it here in January and we go from there.
From a staff level, we've already discussed like a, um, a question and answer fact sheet. Once we file, we didn't want, we didn't really know the sixty-three percent until the last couple of weeks here either. But once we file, then we're going to, you know, try to sit down and put a, a fact sheet together, frequently ask questions, uh, get stuff on a website, using Facebook and, and we can potentially have an open house or a public hearing as we move forward to the PSC will require one anyway, uh, at that time. But hopefully, we can get all this information out before that one even comes around.
And, um, just to, and not to, to hit on the negative, but this project that we have to do, uh, with our water works, that we have to, uh, the safe water loan we're getting to do the project, this is a required thing. The DNR is telling us we have to do this.
Well, the DNR is not mandating that we fix the water filtration plant, but eventually the water filtration plant is going to fail.
Fail, and then if it fails.
Then they are going to mandatorily require you to fix it. So, um, we are starting to see failures already. Our backwash system, um, and, and one cell is broken, another cell is not working properly. Um, our diffusers up, up top in the, in the tank, some of them are blown out, missing. So we're already starting to see failures. So it's, you know, we're all, we're a short period away from a catastrophic failure to the point where we're just going to be doing it right now. And potentially the DNR will be sanctioning you to do it. We're not to that point yet.
But we don't want to get there.
We don't want to get there.
You have to do maintenance on everything.
Correct.
Yeah.
And the water filtration plant was built nineteen ninety-two. And other than like outside painting, um, there hasn't been a need to do anything to it. So that, we've added some sand and some coal over the years too, to keep it going. We've done our maintenance, you know, so we're, we're thirty-plus years into, into something that's only projected to live twenty years to twenty-five years. So we're already past the life expectancy of this filtration.
Got your money's worth.
Okay. So, so we have two things on the agenda tonight. And again, any more specific questions from the folks from Aylers? Um, I think they did a great job. It's, um, obviously, um, I, I think we did this correct, worked with somebody who's done a lot of these. So obviously, we're presenting it, um, and we'll be presenting it to the PSC as best we can.
I just have one more question. Is there anything that can be done with conservation credits to reduce any of those costs? Or make any revenues that we can make from this?
We can't make any more revenues on the water system because we can only charge for consumption. As far as conservation credits, I'm not aware of, of that.
Are they aware of anything with conservation credits?
I'm not even aware of what conservation credits are. Are you guys aware of what conservation credits are?
Yeah, uh, it's not as widely used, you know, around here, just considering, uh, the abundance of water, uh, out west. Uh, much more widely used. There's a few, I think, two utilities up at the top of my head that use it. But, um, you can look at, uh, conservation credits, but it actually, um, in terms of cost-benefit analysis, you have to get a certain participation rate, right? In order to kind of lower overall pumping expenses and operating expenses in order to meet it. It tends to be something that, um, it's hard to quantify unless you've had it for a period of time as well. But if you're going to pay back somebody for using less water, um, uh, essentially here, instead of charge them for linear usage, in, in theory, knowing that not many are getting out of the first rate block. You would really need to know that your operating expenses would be reduced in a similar, greater fashion to say that you're, it's making monies. So that's why you, you, we don't see a lot of utilities in Wisconsin do it because, um, there's not as much, you know, state or federal support for it, just given the, uh, you know, you don't get extra money from the state for doing it here. Um, the, um, really, it's like an internal analysis for the utility. If you can save the money, they offer the program, uh, at the PSC level because they have to approve anything you do. But it's, you know, to my knowledge, they, it's not like the PSC is giving money to any utilities to do it.
The hard part.
Does that make sense?
I apologize if it spaced me when you said conservation credits. The hard part too here in Duran is a large, uh, a large majority of our water usage is sprinkler systems. So if we, I encourage conservation, don't get me wrong. But if we, if, if they, if that gets cut in half, that reduces our, we're, we're not saving money on pumpage by any means because we're still pumping. Um, our pumps are going to run the same amount of time. You know, we're not going to use enough, we're not going to use enough less chemical to make our chemical addition go down by twenty percent or thirty percent or anything like that. So we're not going to save a ton on O and M, but we're going to lose revenue. If we lose, if we lose that revenue because they're using less water, instead of a sixty-three percent rate increase, you could be seeing a seventy or an eighty percent because we still need that revenue to operate. So conservation is a very fine line when it, in, when it comes to, to our water department because we rely so much on them using that and that revenue.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, first, we have the resolution. It's twenty-five oh one, authorizing direct charge of public fire protection fee to the water bills. It's been, of course, included in your packet and this has been assembled to include all of the parts that's already have been talked about, correct? So that, um, if I read it correctly, um, so the things that we talked about, about adjacent parcels and so on and so forth and allowing us to do it, it meets all of the way, the recommendation that Aylers has put forward in this, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Yes. Okay.
Do we need a motion to?
Would somebody like to offer this resolution, please?
I'll offer the resolution twenty-five oh one.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
And is there a second?
Second.
Motion, okay, it's on the floor for discussion. A resolution twenty-five oh one, a resolution authorizing a direct charge of public fire protection. Okay, is there any more discussion or questions specifically about this? What we're basically doing is moving this up the tax rolls and on to the water bills.
From the general fund to the water bills directly?
Yes.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Just have to educate.
Yes, and that'd be part of it, explaining that, yeah, there's, there's a reason why we're doing this. Yeah. Okay, hearing, normal discussion. We'll call a question, roll call, please.
Councilmember Raisler.
Yes.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Councilmember Menke.
Yes.
Councilmember Weizenbeck.
Yes.
All four in favor.
Okay. The next item, discussion possible action to submit to the PSC, the water rate case filing. Of course, this is all the information as Aylers, uh, would present for us. Um, and again, as we said, this process, you know, it could be, uh, the, these rates, by the time we got to the whole thing, we get to the final, probably by this fall sometime, exactly when it would come in. But again, public, we'll, we'll have our own public meetings to discuss these rate increases, why we're doing them, why they're necessary. And of course, there are the PSC will have a public hearing with the opportunity for people to participate. Um, the actual hearing, I believe, is conducted electronically. If you want to, you can come in and watch and, and you're able to be able to participate in that. Citizens are able to do so. Um, I remember I listened in the last time we had ours, uh, sitting in my office in Eau Claire, actually. I was doing that, so. Okay, so this is just a simple motion, I believe, correct? If somebody would like to make a motion to sub.
I will make a motion to file the test year two thousand and twenty-five PSC water rate case application as presented.
Second.
And there's a second. It's on the floor for any further discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Weizenbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Raisler.
Yes.
Councilmember Menke.
Yes.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Yes.
All four in favor.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Have a good night. If you need anything, give us a, send us an email. We'll just show up tomorrow.
Okay. We knew that was probably going to be one of the biggest things. Okay. So next we have the consent agenda, a few items to approve. Approve the Public Works Committee meeting from January, uh, eighth, twenty twenty-five and the regular city council meeting minutes from January eighth, twenty twenty-five, not twenty twenty-eight. And we have bartender license.
Can I ask a question about the Public Works Committee meeting about the discussion regarding the sidewalk placement? I've taken two calls from people that live through there, questioning about sidewalks or being removed. Questions about it being so close to the school and removing sidewalks. I don't know anything about it. I said I would ask questions.
Well, we can approve this on here, uh, when we get down to the public works utilities, uh, and under the report, we can answer those questions at that time, okay?
Perfect.
Okay. And then next we have bartender license for Amy M. Neary and Erin N. Bowen, Brazil, at the subblock two. And Emma R. Olitz-Ziegler for a consumer's co-op.
Everything is fine.
Okay. A motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm making a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Session.
We have a motion second to approve the consent agenda. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is approved. Next we move on to the business report. Mayor's, um, uh, just a couple of things to mention. Would like to thank Dave for the open house, uh, back on the thirteenth. Did attend, a couple, some staff did also attend, um, so on and so forth. The, I thought it was a nice opportunity to speak to some of those folks, um, so on. But again, uh, thank you for the invite and a, a nice event. Um, would like to make sure that, um, uh, as you know, we are, at the pool, we, um, lost our sign company. And I'd like to thank, Matt's been working very hard on this. Tracy's also been helping about trying to track down a new one. And we're talking about the signs for the donors and so on and so forth, and that is moving forward. So just to let everybody know that we're getting some, uh, working with a different company, uh, and we're moving forward with that. But especially a couple of staff members that have worked very hard, especially Matt and, and Tracy calling in, um, getting different possibilities and, and to do that. Um, also just a reminder to everybody, coming up on Thursday, the thirtieth, nine AM ribbon cutting. Everybody's invited at the River and Grace, the new store, um, just down Main Street here. Again, nine AM on the thirtieth for that ribbon cutting. And if anybody can attend, that would be great. That's all I've got. Any questions? Hearing none. We'll move on to the administrator's report. Administrator Fowson.
Okay. I also attended the, um, Dave Open House that was just referenced. Um, they had a good turnout. Uh, they're focusing on renovating the van shell as they, the van shell is celebrating a hundred years this year. If you believe that, so there were some nice photos and old articles that were found, um, regarding the van shell when it was built. And so there's a focus on that. Uh, I am continuing to explore an IT audit. I had a preliminary security audit done, uh, yesterday, actually, at no cost to the city. There's some large deficiencies that need to be worked on. So I'm going to be, um, calling around to see what I can find at a reasonable price to help assist with the security issues that we have here. Um, and then starting next week, uh, we're going to be holding monthly all-staff meetings, basically for full-time staff, uh, which is designed to inform the employees about various benefits and different issues and updates and, and things that, um, questions are arising. And it's just a, um, good idea, I think, to have a monthly meeting with staff to, over those things and questions that they might have. So, um, that's all I have until we hit the, um, other pieces here, action items. So any questions on those few items? Okay.
Okay. Hearing nothing. Um, discussion possible action regarding creating a room tax ordinance.
I will take that if that's all right.
Yep.
Okay, so, um, with the help of Leanna and Katie Hartung, we've had a conversation about tourism and promoting tourism in the city. And it came to fruition that there, um, is no room tax being charged in the city. And doesn't appear like there has been room tax ever charged or even that it's even in the ordinances. So, um, I did a little research, uh, looking into it and found that a lot of municipalities that have hotels or Airbnbs can, uh, they do charge a room tax. That room tax is, uh, basically passed on to the customer. So it's not any big hit to the owner or to the corporate, um, folks who own the, own the, um, lodging facilities. So basically, what. So basically, what it amounts to is that we can tax up to 8% on the sales price of the rooms, and 70% of those funds that are collected have to go towards tourism efforts within the city, 30% can go back into the general fund to use for general, general items. Currently, we have Cobblestone, I did speak to the manager at Cobblestone, he was very surprised that there isn't a room tax, didn't think it was going to be a big deal, Cobblestone's a corporately-owned Cobblestone, they pay room tax all across municipalities in which they sit. And then Airbnb, VRBOs, any of those type of online services, they, we would probably have to inform them or their corporate that we would have a room tax in place, and then they tack that on to their hosts and hostesses, and then they, they pay us. So potential income, I put that in the memo, based on information received and using Cobblestone as an example, with a 40% occupancy, there's a potential to receive approximately $42,000 a year. Of that, $29,000, 70% could be used for tourism efforts, and then the remaining $12,000 could be used for general municipal expenditures. So it's a benefit for the municipality, for the city, I feel like we're leaving money on the table by not having a room tax in place. So I would like to ask for a motion to, for myself, to work with a city attorney to create a room tax ordinance to bring forth at a later date for review, so that can be implemented.
The only other, does Pepin have a room tax?
Village of Pepin does.
Village Pepin does. And what, do you know what percentage it is?
It's the 8%.
And what, do you know what they bring in?
I think, I think last time I checked, it was about 80, 60 is used, I think.
Is what they bring in?
A little over 60, something like that, yeah.
The, the other requirement along with this, the, the money that, of course, you could spend more, I mean, you could, you could take, but obviously, we would need so much to cover general expenses within the thing, that to creation of a, a commission?
Yes. Yeah, so back in 2015, the industry people, people that were in, in the industry, were getting a little worked up and upset because they were paying this room tax and they didn't have a say in where those dollars were going. So, you know, think about the larger municipalities that have three, four, five different hotels, they're paying in this room tax, the municipality was, was using the money for tourism, what does tourism mean? That was up to the municipality to decide what tourism meant. Well, the state put in, enacted a law that said that if you're going to have a room tax, then you have to create a tourism commission, if you will. There's, I think it's like an elected official and somebody from that, that hotel or those hotels, the hospitality industry has to be on that commission, and then community members, I believe, anyway, they get to decide where the money should be spent, because that impacts them directly for tourism pieces. So that's one, something, something that we would have to do here if we put a room tax in place, is to create a tourism commission to determine how to spend those, that 70%.
And I'm fairly familiar with that, back in the early 90s, and some people know I was with the Menominee Chamber of Commerce for a number of years, and they had a commission, and it was, there was a couple of member, people, members for people that were owners of motels, some community members, it was a broad section of folks, and they were able to, to do that. And again, it was the same situation, the city held back so much for operational things, but then X amount was put in the fund and then that, they made the decisions as far as where those dollars went. And obviously, it gives a buy-in for those folks, and I mean, that makes sense, and, you know.
So the 40%, or the 42,000, that was just on 40% occupancy of Cobblestone?
Correct.
So do we have any idea how many VRBOs or Airbnbs we have?
It's not very many.
It's just Katie, I believe, in the city of Duran.
No, and technically, prospect.
That's moving to a long-term rental, I believe, so they're no longer going to be an Airbnb, so it's just going to be Katie.
Yeah.
And she's already one or two? She just has one in Duran.
Just one in Duran, yeah, yeah. So right now, it's just one, but that could change, I mean, you know, somebody else wants to come in and buy something and use it as an Airbnb, I mean, that would qualify to, yeah, as a short-term rental.
So again, tonight, what we're looking for, what's looking for, is just a motion that we would go forward to work to put this together, and we get a framework on how it would go on, again, it would come back here, obviously, for final approval.
Correct, yeah.
Is there anything about, can you implement this at any time?
I believe so.
You don't have to wait till January 1st, or?
No, not to my knowledge.
Go on. Any more discussion on this?
Would you like me to abstain from voting?
I don't think so, doesn't really affect you directly.
Doesn't affect your pocket directly, so.
It could, so this is the city, could the county also do one?
No.
It's just one municipality?
Yeah, town of Duran can do one, but counties cannot.
There can't be a county?
Because the counties already have the sales, the 5% sales tax rate, so they can't do any 20%.
They do, that's a sales tax, yeah, yeah. But there we have it, yeah.
Yeah.
So there's no, I'm just like, thinking big picture of the, out into the, in the county, all the, you know, different VRBOs and.
Right, oh, yeah, yeah, each, each little.
Wedding bed.
All the towns can do it if they want to.
Yeah.
Town of Pepin should be doing it, I don't know, I don't know if they are or not, I can't remember if they are, but, yeah, I think Village of Stockholm, or, you know, Village of Stockholm's doing it, Village of Pepin's doing it.
Yeah.
Okay. Any more discussion, would somebody like to make a motion to, to have the city administrator work with legal counsel to put together an ordinance for future consideration by the council?
I will make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Is there any more discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Next, we have discussion possible action regarding creation of a farmer's market. Of course, we don't have any official farmer's markets here in Duran, we know that in the fall and stuff, the summer and fall, we do have the folks that sell in the high school parking lot, that's, used to be run by the Lions Club at one time, in fact, they used to go and charge them, actually, and then, but now it's just people in the high school parking lot selling stuff. So we officially don't have a farmer's market here, even the ones down on the street was never an official one, and so on and so forth. So if you'd like to explain about what we would, about actually having an organized farmer's market, again, to draw people into town, I mean, that's the main reason, and the opportunity for people to sell their goods, so if you'd like to.
Sure, sure, yeah, so shortly after I started, Jenny put out a survey about farmers' markets, got a really good response, people are very interested in that. Long story short, we focused on Monday afternoons, late afternoon into the evening possibly, we're still trying to figure out timing, that would be right. But for that, the reason is to incorporate food trucks along with the farmer's market, because Mondays are, there's really nothing open for, for meals or dining out. So we were thinking Mondays, over at the park, I've talked to Matt about using the park to do it, he was fine with that, it would be local farmers, artisans, food trucks, home bakers, florists, you know, those type of things, little to no cost to the city to start, might be some, just some PR pieces, marketing pieces, that we might have to pay a little expense for, and then there'd be a minimal cost to vendors for the first season. Minimal meaning, you know, 30, 35 bucks for the season, I mean, not anything that's going to be outrageously large. Dague is interested in helping and assisting, so we would work closely with them, we need to come up for a name, come up with a name for it, I do have experience working with a different farmer's market, being a co-manager kind of creator, have 10 years of documentation and so forth that I can use to create something in here, so we've got all the regulations and rules, and there's some state things that need to be followed, so I have that experience. There's a lot of benefits to a farmer's market, and so we're just asking for the approval to go ahead and move forward with the creation of a farmer's market starting this summer.
And so what we would do is, we would charge people?
Correct.
And do we have an idea how much, and exactly how those funds would be used?
Sure, so like I said, it'd probably be, I can't imagine it being more than 30, 35, 40 dollars, somewhere in that range. The only reason for that is if you, if you have a farmer's market and you don't charge the vendors, they have no teeth in the game to continue to come back. If they're paying for a booth, then they're willing to come back. If they're not paying for a booth, then they just come whenever they want to, and we don't want, we don't want that, we want there to be a consistent vendor participation. So it's just a small little teeth in the game, if you will, to get the vendors to come back. The monies would be used for PR, eventually, we might want to get a, like a banner or something that, I don't know, we can hang anything over Main Street here to, to indicate, you know, go this direction for a farmer's market, there's, you know, maybe logo creation, you know, administratively, we're going to have, you know, some work to be done on the backside, keeping track of the vendors and, you know, that type of thing. So it's, like I said, minimal cost, but any funds that are raised would go in towards, towards those pieces.
So the, the market that just seems to pop up at the school parking lot, is that still going to be going on then?
I suppose that's up to them, up to those vendor, we would appeal to those vendors to come and participate in this organized farmer's market. So if they wanted to do that and not do the school district one, that's, that's entirely up to them, I guess the school would have to be the one to.
It's true.
Yeah.
It's true?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's the Amish lady who sells.
And it's more, I think it's kind of occasional, right? It's not every.
Well, she's there, oh, from, she's there all summer, all the way through the thing. And then there's one other vegetable.
Yeah.
And stuff, and that, and flowers, and that's it. And that's very, that's the one, that's, yeah, that's the one that's.
And they're doing it on the weekends, aren't they?
Saturdays.
Saturdays, yes.
The one vegetable that we did have down here, she was on Wednesdays for a long time, and that, I think, just changed in the last year or two, a couple years.
Yeah.
But the one is always Saturday, that's an Amish lady, and she even rented the space for, it was the space at, what was it, Roseburg Haven, for a little while this fall, because she was going up the hill just before Christmas, I stopped in a couple times, she had to stop inside, and she sounded like she was going back in April, so we can appeal to that.
Yeah, yeah, so we would reach out to those vendors if we can, and then hopefully, they would want to stay with, do something more organized on a regular basis, and then I suppose if they wanted to do a different one, if the school district lets them, you know, that's really the prerogative, so.
Well, on Monday, probably not, and have as much competition, I mean, the big one, you know, Claire is what, Thursday and Saturday, and Menominee's Saturday and stuff, I mean, if those are the months that we're competing against, I don't know, does anybody else have, does Pepin have one, or Sokol, or?
Pepin's trying to have like a Pepintime Market, but it's, we don't know what it all dates.
Ellsworth is doing Thursday evenings.
I think, yeah, I think I looked at local farmer's markets in the area, and nothing was really competing with Monday, so it's a really good choice today.
Yeah.
But they're running music too, they're playing a club.
Yeah, yeah, and so part of that too, working with Dague is, you know, do we get in, you know, some sort of a kid event on a Monday afternoon, or do we have a little music in the park on a Monday afternoon, when you come and enjoy a meal and then get to pick up your fresh produce and sit around and steal a band, or have someone sing, or have karaoke night, or, you know, there's just, I mean, a plethora of things that could be done for a farmer's market to, to attract people, so.
I think it's worth a try, I just wonder about the Monday.
Yeah, and, and, you know, if Monday, if we do it for the first year, if Monday doesn't work very well, then we can always adjust.
And I think you're going to save some grief with the local restaurants if you try to bringing the farm to the food truck, so that would be my recommendation too.
Yeah, yeah, right, and if it's a different day, we'd have to really consider whether or not we would want food trucks.
Yep.
Or just a simple farmer's market, you know, if it were any, any other day, yeah, yeah, for sure, because we don't want to compete with that, the idea is to bring people to the community, let them get their, whatever they need at the pier, and then walk downtown or enjoy the river, or, you know, whatnot, just keep them here. But if it was a different day, we certainly wouldn't want to compete with the restaurants and bars in the world, so.
I'll make a motion, we proceed with looking at creating a farmer's market.
Second.
We have a motion and second, is there any more discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's agreed.
Thanks, bye.
Next, we have discussion possible action to contract with General Code for complete recodification of current ordinances. This was brought to my attention, it was funny, and I told this to the city administrator, it seemed like we just did this, and then we find out it was nine years ago, that we actually did this, but there are a number of things that we need to work on, if you want to sort of explain, though, we're really not going to look for any action tonight because you have some more investigation to do on some things, if you'd like to explain that, please.
Sure, so the code needs a lot of help, reached out to General Code, which is a company that I'm familiar with, they've got decent pricing, was ready to present this evening, then found out from, from Cedar Court that they, that they also do some code work, the zoning code for the city is in dire need of some improvements, and Cedar Court does zoning code improvements, so instead of duplicating efforts, I need to get more information from Cedar as far as what they would charge to do the zoning code piece of the ordinances first, to, to look that over, rewrite it, whatever it needs, and then possibly work with General Code or, or even another company, I can present a couple quotes if you needed me to, to do a full recodification, review and update. So I'm just asking for this to be put on hold for now, I'm not interested in, or needing any sort of action until I get more information from Cedar to bring forth, focusing on that zoning code as a priority.
Tracy, did you say that General Code doesn't do the zoning?
General Code does not do, yeah, they don't.
So it's not like we're not going with them?
Right, yeah, yes, thank you, my friend, yes, that's correct, the, they don't focus on, they don't focus on, on a deep dive into zoning code like Cedar Court does, so, and that's what's needed as a priority. So just hold off on that for now.
Okay. Next, we move on to public safety, Chief Frisway.
Yeah, I just want to give you guys an update, I sent everybody an email regarding the Eau Claire County and City letter that they had sent to the Attorney General, I did respond, some help from Tracy, sent out a press release, released the body cam video, proud of the officer, the action that he took that night. I reached out to the AGs of the Attorney General's office today, I'm going to touch base with them, try to figure out how I can get our case to him, so he can potentially review it himself, to see what he's dealing with. And so if you have any questions on that, you'll all probably have my cell phone, if you don't, you can, good if Tracy, reach out to me, and we can talk about it, if you want to come up, review the body camera in my office, feel free to do so, or I can send it to you even, feel free to review it if you would like, but if you have questions, just reach out to me and I, I can answer those questions. That's all I have.
And I want to say a couple of things on that subject, Ben letting the chief handle as far as, I know we take, took quite a few media requests, as far as handling those questions, I, I'd like to commend the, the chief and his staff. I was aware of this situation, the chief had brought this to my attention, even before, I was quite surprised when the next thing I hear about it, all of a sudden, I see a, a media release from Eau Claire concerning this situation, and that all of a sudden, that they made the decision to go ahead and send this to the Attorney General without having more of a regional discussion concerning, concerning this issue. And, but at, at this point, I, I am perfectly happy with our staff and the way that we've handled everything, and obviously, we'll continue to, to, to deal with this, obviously, we're not the only agency that was involved in this, there were multiple agencies that were, that were discussed in the information that Eau Claire sent to, and again, obviously, they've requested the Attorney General for an opinion, and I don't know, he quickly, let's say the Attorney General comes up with an opinion, what does that mean?
Well, it would be very troubling if he did, because we worked with, we have pretty regular meetings with human services, law enforcement does, and after that, that night, Eau Claire, the city of Eau Claire contacted me and reached out, and they were, they were upset about it, and I said that was one of our only services we had, was to take them to the Soldier House, so we, we discussed it, well, we had brought it up at our human services and law enforcement meeting, when Kara was still with Pepin County Human Services, she agreed to try to find us a hotel that would accept our voucher programs without having a credit card deposit. So, so she worked hard on finding two hotels that would accept them, they aren't in our jurisdiction, they're, they're in two surrounding jurisdictions that are not even in Pepin County. So if the AG does restrict those types of transports, now we've lost a resource that we've worked to try to get, because, you know, I understand Eau Claire's concerns that they don't want all, all of the drop-offs there, but that was our only service at the time when we did it. Now we've found a service, and now if our hands are tied, we're, we don't have an Uber here, are we going to have to have human services contract with some sort of driving company to come and get them, those are all things we're going to have to discuss, but Those are all things we're gonna have to discuss. But I just think that, um, to save our taxpayers' money, it doesn't, it doesn't hurt us as long as I know about it, and the Sheriff's Department knows that, hey, city of Durant's gonna drive somebody to the hotel that'll, that'll take our vouchers. It's, it saves us money rather than having to contract with a, with a driving service. It's good for Pepin County, and if the AG does make this decision, then we can't, it's gonna cost us more money, so.
And why won't Cobblestone?
It's a corporate policy at Cobblestone, so it's not like it's the manager at this Cobblestone. Their corporate policy is, is you have to have a credit card for securing damages.
I understand. I understand that, yeah.
Yeah. And most people that are gonna be in need of a voucher program are not gonna have a credit card.
A credit card. Yeah, makes perfect sense.
Yeah. And so, it puts us in a really tough spot, because we don't, we don't have any other options for them, so.
Is there a way that, if you start collecting 8% on all the rooms there, you can start a slush fund somehow, so that you can have room there when you need it. 8%. I'm just a, rather than dumping people somewhere else, if it's gonna cause problems, keep it here somehow. There must be a way to get that accomplished. That's all I'm gonna say about it. 'Cause that puts, you know, who wants to be in that position?
Yeah.
Doing your job the best you can, and until you get complaints about it, you don't have to say it.
And obviously, it's not lost on us, the fact that we don't live in a bubble here. I work in downtown Eau Claire. Um, I, I've had to deal with homeless people, and the issues that they have there, at, at the business that I work at, the building I work at, so on and so forth. So it's not like living in a bubble to say that this is just what we're doing, and we understand. Obviously, Eau Claire, uh, the city of Eau Claire has a number of things to deal with, but obviously, there's certain services that only, that are offered there. I mean, that's the thing.
Yeah. And the last thing I'll say on that is, those services receive significant funding from federal and state, and it was not with the desire for them to only serve citizens of Eau Claire. It's a regional facility, and they receive plenty of funding. I shouldn't say plenty of funding, because that's not fair. I don't know what their expenses are. They receive significant amount of funding to handle those situations.
But couldn't, if it wasn't during the day, would it be a different situation?
I don't know what their, it, somebody probably would've answered the phone, or helped us, uh, find a bed for this person, so. Um, so that, that could've been a different situation. We could've worked, uh, with some more facilities at, um, you know, Hope Gospel. They aren't open very late. You know, we've, we've taken, we've done this before. Hope Gospel, probably a year ago, I took a guy to Hope Gospel that was being kicked out of his parents' house, and didn't have a place to go. And we worked with Hope Gospel, but it was during the day. Called them, yeah, we can help this guy out. And we packed his bags. I waited for him to get packed up. We loaded his bags in the back of my squad car, and I took him to Hope Gospel.
Yeah.
And it's a service we provide, and, uh...
It's just important to note, like, we're not taking people against their will and dropping, like, they're asking to go there, right? And so, um, we're, we're able to help get them there. Um, so they could easily find other rides and just be dropped off there, and, you know, so.
It's just the point that somebody will take advantage of that situation and turn it into something that's not.
Yeah.
This isn't, this isn't just an Eau Claire, our area issue. This is nationwide.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, there have been, um, numerous, uh, sessions at, I think, the last three municipality Wisconsin conferences. I'm missing the name there somewhere, but...
League of Municipalities.
League of Municipalities, addressing homelessness. And usually, um, the La Crosse mayor kind of leads those, although he's not gonna be mayor anymore, I don't think. But one of his things was homelessness, and so he did a lot of things this. And, and that was kind of the premise of his thing, is the more the city of La Crosse does to kind of boost the aid to the homeless, the more it brings in.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, kinda has to be according.
Okay. Any other questions for, uh, Police Department? No. Hearing none. We'll move on to Fire, um, Department. Chief's not here, but move on to Ambulance. Director Biggell.
I don't really have anything this week, um, besides what we went through two weeks ago. Everything's just kinda going smooth.
Okay. Any questions for the ambulance? Hearing none. Move on to Public Works Utilities. Matt?
Yeah, a couple of things. Uh, we did, uh, we did receive our construction authorization letter from the PSC to commence with construction of the water filter project, uh, this afternoon. So, uh, that extension that they filed at the last meeting did not take 90 days, just took an extra two weeks. So, um, we got that today. Everything is good. Everything is approved, so we can kind of move on to the next step. Uh, the next step is kind of putting a timetable together. Um, biggest step is the rate case filing. Without that, we can't do the project. So file the rate case. Um, we have to kind of coordinate when the rate case will take, will be done and be taken into effect versus when the DNR requires the loan to be closed out on, to make sure that that timeline matches up, to make sure that the rate case is gonna be done before a certain date. Uh, don't quote me on, say, September 15th, the DNR might require the safe drinking water loans to be closed out, to make sure that, uh, we have to make sure that our rate case is done and construction is done before that final closeout day. So, um, back to the drawing board for myself and, and the engineering staff to kind of figure that, that portion out. But good news, uh, that, that letter did come in today. Uh, Seventh Avenue, we're continuing to work on the construction of Seventh Avenue. Um, to get into Matt's question, um, we did talk about sidewalks at the Public Works Committee meeting, whether they were needed on both sides of the road, uh, up there or not. Uh, flow, we talked a little bit about walkability, uh, things like that. The way it came out of the Public Works meeting was we were going to continue to design the projects with sidewalks on both sides. Um, we would put it out to bid, and as an alternate, we'd have, um, I'll just say, the north side as alternate one, south side as alternate two, and then a combination of them. Uh, put it out for bid. And in the meantime, I was tasked with doing a survey of the four property owners there to kind of get their consensus on sidewalks, potential usability of what they see since they live there, whether they want sidewalks or don't want sidewalks. Um, and then we'll also conduct a kind of, uh, uh, flow pattern, right? We want our sidewalks to kind of, uh, flow in with other sidewalks, try to minimize the amount of, of road crossings that, um, anyone may or may not have to do. So, uh, there was no decision on whether they're coming or going, uh, but that's what we're moving forward with in the design and the bid. So we will have those discussions, uh, at a council meeting when we open the bids, and then we'll decide, based on the bid, if we want, um, and, and the survey and the studies that we do between now and then, if we want sidewalks on both sides. So, long-winded answer, we didn't make any decisions.
By the way, Matt, just as, as people contact, you mainly want more sidewalks?
They were concerned about sidewalks being taken away.
Taken away, okay.
And concerned on the safety impacts with all these...
Safety pack, you mentioned, well, that's part of it.
I ultimately said, I would reach out to Matt, but I would encourage them to also, if they have concerns, questions, to...
That was asked.
Watch, watch the agendas and, and come here in person, so. Or call Matt.
Or call Matt.
You need to call. Uh, also, Madison Street, uh, Cedar Court and I, and Tracy met here last week. Uh, we were kind of fine-tuning the plans. Uh, hopefully, we're gonna have our cost estimate brushed up, uh, by the, um, 6th of February, and then we will get that cost estimate to elders, and we'll let them, uh, do their, uh, um, cost analysis and see how, uh, we can afford to pay for that project. And again, hopefully, uh, we're on a timetable to get that back in front of you by, um, end of March, beginning of April. Other than that, unless you have any questions for me, that's all I got.
Any questions for Public Works Utilities? Hearing none. Discussion of possible action regarding, uh, contract for Dolby Conservation Services LLC for the amount of $4,700 for forestry management. Uh, this sort of came from, uh, some conversations I know we've had around this table, and some council members asking about, that we've talked about. We have some property with a, a number with forest or lumber on it. Um, uh, we haven't made any efforts to decide if they should be, um, considered to, to take some of that lumber off and do some management with those. Correct? That's why we, we're bringing this forward at this time.
Yeah. So again, we have about 116 acres of property in the city that's woodland, uh, 96 down here along the river, um, give or take eight, uh, around the, uh, Terran Park, and then up by the water towers, the remainder acreage. Uh, so what we need to do is put a forestry management plan together. The majority of this timber is in wetland. So there's a lot of DNR regulation, um, that we kind of need to follow. We gotta go in and, and create a inventory of a base of species. Um, we'll also get, uh, data on trees that need to be removed, age of trees, kinds of trees, which will then help us go out to bid, will help us get an inventory of what, uh, what we may or may not, um, recoup for, for, uh, he's logging this off, essentially. So first step is, is to basically do a forest management program or an inventory. Uh, we did do one of these for the city about a year ago. That, uh, was a free program through the DNR, but that only consists of, um, non-wooded areas like streets, road right away, your parks. They did not go into any forestry-type, um, settings to do this. So this is, this, uh, would this be that essentially 116 acres that we own? Uh, when this gets done, then we'll come back here, we'll kind of have a result of the inventory, um, and then we'll be able to give you a little bit better idea of what we may have down there for timber, and what we may, um, receive, uh, for logging that off.
How long do you think it'll take them to do this?
I'm hoping I'll have the report back by June, so. It's gonna take a, a few months. They're gonna have to walk through all 116 acres and boots on the ground, so that's all gonna take time. Uh, and then go back, put the report together, so I'm hoping to have it by June.
Sounds good. Sounds like a good plan. Um, I got a quick question for you. Um, I walk my dogs back there a lot. So if I go underneath the bridge and keep walking, how far back does it go?
96 acres?
I go quite a ways back.
So, uh, so, for example, let's go to the other end of town, you know, uh, with the gravel road that goes past the softball field?
Yep.
Um, you look out to your left, and those fields out there, we don't own any of the actual farmland, but just inside that timber line, probably 100, 150 yards is pretty close to the property line.
Okay.
So that, that gives you a reference of how far from the bridge, pretty much up to, up to, uh, to the well back there off of...
So, so, like, that's the one right there, right?
Yeah. So that's, that's what would be included with.
So there's 96 total acres down there.
Yeah.
So the intention of spending this money would be, first of all, to get a forestry management plan for our...
Correct.
But the other idea would be the possibility of, that some, that may need to be, should be logged, 'cause again, and that there possibly would, we could sell some logs and be able to bring some money back to help cover the cost of, of doing that, so.
Yeah. Hopefully, we'll spend some money upfront, then we'll be recouping this cost. We'll be recouping any other management costs that'll come with the, the sale of the timber, um, and then have a little bit of leftover revenue for the city when the project is done. Like that, what that would be, I don't know that right now. That's what this, this program would help us find.
Out of curiosity, do you know what species is desirable to them?
Uh, no, I haven't got into that with them yet.
There's some big trees that are down already back there.
Any more questions? Would somebody like to make a motion that we would, um, take a contract with Dolby Conservation Services LLC in the amount of $4,700 for forestry, uh, management?
I'll make a motion to re-contract with Dolby Services LLC in the amount of $4,700 for forestry management.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Raisler.
Yes.
Councilmember Cavano.
Yes.
Councilmember Menke.
Yes.
Councilmember Weisenbeck.
Yes.
All four in favor.
Motion's agreed to. Next, we move into closed session. The council will convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State statute 1985-1E.